Virginia, Monday, August 12, 2013, Board of Education meeting be approved as set forth, and each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Thank you. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Action. Director Witt?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
Director Laberty?
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
President Meisterling?
Aye. Thank you. Next, I'll turn this over to Dave for superintendent report.
Thank you. This evening, I would like to make three comments. One, we're pleased that we've been able to get some press on different venues for the Big Ideas School. This is a great opportunity for us to have a start at the issue of breaking down the seat time structures and building on student interest so that students can have an education that meets their needs and not necessarily in a one-size-fits-all environment. The big school will allow students to remain in their high schools as full-time students and will provide opportunities to build resumes, to demonstrate competencies with community members, and will really expand opportunities for kids. So, we're really pleased to have this opportunity going on, and it's really a cutting-edge project, and we look forward to this issue as it unfolds in the school initiatives that are going to the legislature next year. There is a study committee, and one of our staff members, Sean, is actually on the committee, and I think he made a presentation to the board a couple of meetings ago. So, we're pleased to be poised with our Big Ideas Schools. Secondly, the PEPAL. I want to remind the community, on September 10, we will have a PEPAL renewal vote. It would increase our PEPAL from $0.67 to $1.34. It is needed, from our perspective, to advance maintenance. Our facilities are getting progressively older, and we need to do more maintenance, and there are plans that outline all of those on the district website. Further, this is a safety issue for us. Our students, our faculty and staff, and our guests, when they come up to schools, deserve to come up to safe schools, and we need to make some investments in that regard. And finally, I do want to call attention to the change in the voter issues for this PEPAL election. This will, Mr. Miller has designated all four of our high schools and the Educational Learning and Support Center as polling places. So, your regular polling place may be closed, but you can vote at each of our high schools, Washington, Jefferson, Kennedy, and Metro, and here at the ELSC, and would encourage everybody to please come out and do so. There is a board election also on that date. So, we've got an important PEPAL vote coming up, and I encourage the community to educate yourself on that issue, and certainly understand where the polling places will be, since this is different for this election. And finally, it's my privilege tonight to introduce Trace Pickering to you as the Associate Superintendent for Innovation, School Improvement, and Technology. Dr. Pickering has been a teacher, billing administrator, and executive member of the administrative team at Grant Wood Area Education Agency, as well as an employee of the Gazette Companies. He has his doctorate from Drake University and is a 21-year resident of the Cedar Rapids community, has some lovely kids, very talented family, so welcome and congratulations. We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. It was very nice, and welcome on behalf of the board, Trace. We're happy to have you onboard. We look forward to an exciting school year, and just wish you the best for our students. Next, our communicate, oh, actually, are there any board reports? Sorry?
Or comments?
I'd like to start chalk talk up again this fall, but I was hoping that we could have it on a more regular basis, maybe once a quarter. And so, if you're interested in participating, please let me know, and maybe we can get a schedule posted on the website so that people have advanced notice. So, if you're thinking about participating, let me know. Next is Communications, Delegations, and Petitions. I do have a request to address the school board. Lawrence Winckelsky, if you'd like to come up to the podium, please state your name and address, and keep your comments to three minutes. We would appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure. Lawrence Winckelsky, 4234 Merrill Road, Northeast Cedar Rapids. Got a chance to look over the contract for the web redesign, and I had some questions for it. Couple of them were actually contract-related, and some of them are more or less general content-related as to what we're trying to accomplish. The contract-related ones sort of has to do with, one is, they talk about $1,500 for travel, and that I'm hoping that it's by car, because the idea of people, I mean, you can fly from Chicago to Cedar Rapids, but, you know, that $1,500 will get eaten up real quickly, and since they're going to charge us for everything over that. The other thing, and it talks about charging hourly rates of $150 up to $88,000, and after that, it's going to be $200 an hour. Well, I know attorneys who don't get paid $150 an hour, and who are experienced attorneys in it. And so, if they can't get the job done within, you know, I would like to think that it'd still be $150 an hour or less for additional time. But, some of the questions I had is, are we going to still allow schools and teachers to continue to host their own websites off where they do on Google and other places? You know, there's talks about search engines, but one feature that I think would be very helpful is to be able to return documents by date, and that when you do it by context, sometimes you're getting the oldest document, and all you really want is the most recent. What's the expected life cycle of this project? And that one of my, one's a school, a district, and I have to dish out another $100,000 or more to redo it. With this product, there needs to be some internal rules as to how long data is kept and accessible to the public. It can't be determined randomly by one individual in it. What's going to happen with Engage CR and the company that does our surveys is, you know, because this, from within the proposal, it says it basically can do pretty much what Engage CR does. So, we're going to continue to spend that money? Will we lose C in meeting attachments, or will it be with the CMS tool that's provided in there, we'll be able to get more documentation as to presentations people make? You know, there are talks about blogs and frequently asked questions. I'm not sure exactly how they classify the difference, but, you know, with the PEPAL, for instance, with PEPAL coming up, if people have questions for that, would that be able to be taken care of under the blog or the frequently asked questions? I think there needs to be a mechanism in which the public can ask the board or administrators about different topics. All the information that we did when we closed Polk School, that whole process would be there.
Mr. Winckelsky, I'm sorry your time was up.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Anyone else wish to address the board that didn't fill out a green sheet? I'll move to the consent agenda. This is going to be a roll call action due to personnel reports, but before we take action on that, does anyone want to pull something for consideration or discussion? Alan?
I just want to comment, sometimes we move so fast through the consent agenda. The item 14-032, that purchase of the property there, that really is a linchpin moment for the school district to create a connection over to Sixth from McKinley Drive. So, that is very impressive, and I'm glad to see that come true. And thank you, Rob.
Thanks for the map, too. That made it clear for us. Gary?
Comment about BA 14036, District Developed Service Delivery Plan for Special Ed. I did have some questions, and Sheila Lehman did answer them this afternoon for me, and I appreciate that. They came in kind of late, and I appreciate, and it was a very adequate answer. In fact, I compliment you on your, on the plan that you put together, the committee that you put together, in coming up with the, with the schedule for class load determination for special ed students. And that's something that's required by the state, I believe, this plan, or reauthorized. My comment is that this was well done, and I would like to see us do the same thing for the general ed, because these special ed students are being, some of them are being mainstreamed in at least part of the day into the, into the general ed classrooms. And I think determining, coming up with a class load criteria for the general ed classrooms, I think would be beneficial. It's a concern that I hear from staff and from, excuse me, parents on our, what our class loads are. And so, if we could use a similar process, then it might be something for a future agenda item. Thank you, Sheila.
Other questions or comments regarding items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, this is a roll call action. Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
Director Laberty?
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
Director Witt?
Aye.
President Meisterling?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to the Administration section of our board book, and the first item is a resolution for a permanent easement at Jefferson High School. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the resolution granting a perpetual electric line easement to Interstate Power and Light Company pending public hearing. I will be abstaining from this vote, because I work for Interstate Power and Light, but this is a roll call action.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
Director Laberty?
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
Director Witt?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Excuse me, President Meisterling?
I'm abstaining. Thank you. Next is a resolution for another permanent easement at Coolidge Elementary School, and it's recommended that the Board of Education approve this resolution granting perpetual electric line easement to Quest Doing Business as CenturyLink pending a public hearing. This also is a roll call action.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, Keith. Yeah.
Actually, I have, but is there any provision that if they quit using that for purpose, that it would revert back to, I didn't see the agreement, that it would revert back to us?
Rob, do you want to step up and address? If you wouldn't mind speaking at the podium? Thank you. And you're talking about both permanent easements, I assume?
Right.
To be honest, I'm not 100% sure there. I doubt if there is, but I can do some checking and get back with you on that.
I think it would be fair to ask legal counsel if that's a clause that should be in there, particularly with communications companies, because things change so rapidly in that area that if they cease to use it, it would revert back to our use, since, you know, they're not really paying us hardly anything for it.
I will check with legal counsel tomorrow to see what their, what their thoughts are on that, see if we can get that included in their, in that agreement.
You know, I thought, actually, that's a good point. I thought when we had, and Lori, I'm kind of looking at you when I say this, that we had an agreement with one of the communications companies for many years, and then I thought they vacated that easement, and then another communication company.
Yeah.
For easement, or used that piece of land. Do you recall that?
Yes.
Okay. Would you mind, yeah, thank you.
That was a.
On, Lori.
I believe in that easement, the contract that we had with the telecommunications company specifically said in the contract that they had that easement as long as they were providing service. So, it was part of that contract.
So, maybe that's the same language that we would like to show up in this easement?
Okay.
With the understanding that it would revert back to the district.
I will get with Lori tomorrow to get some of that language, and then we'll get it off to legal counsel.
Okay, great. And then, do we go ahead and approve this, Laurel, and then?
Yes.
They'll make those changes?
What you're really approving here is that there'll be a public hearing and the approval of the contract at the next board meeting. Does that satisfy your questions, Keith?
Yes.
Nope, and I apologize for not opening that up in the beginning. Next, we are going to move into.
We need a roll call on that, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thanks. Director Laberty?
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
Director Witt?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
President Meisterling?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to turn this over to Lori Bruzak and Trace Pickering to talk about our 2013 technology plan, and you have that handout in your pocket item.
Thank you, Board of Directors. Tonight, we're sharing the details of the new technology plan. The plan focuses on the foundational elements shown here and addresses priorities identified by you in the April work session. The primary goals is to increase student access to resources, and three different paths to doing this. One is to digitize classroom resources, also to address the access to computing devices within the schools, and to provide options for online course offerings. So, increasing student access covers three different subtopics. Also, under addressing the computing devices, we're also looking at providing more types of computing devices, mobile devices, and providing buildings choices of the type of devices that they utilize for their programming needs. We also are going to support innovation and one-to-one pilots through grants of classroom resources, and promote efficiency in the use and management of digital resources for staff in the, as quickly as technology changes, we really need to provide staff support and training as, as those technologies change to, to help them come up to speed with the new technologies as quickly as possible. Extend the learning environment, oops, increase access to the learning environment beyond the classroom, doing this with the Canvas Learning Management System, which provides students, teachers, and parents access to the classroom resources digitally, web-based, and also Office 365, which is an opportunity to store files and collaborate, share files electronically, web-based. We also want to make sure that our network and core data systems address our current needs, but also our future needs. So, as part of this plan, we will routinely look at those core systems and determine if they need to be upgraded or replaced as we move forward. The cost for this plan, $5.6 million annual cost for hardware and infrastructure, which is roughly about $2.6 million, and operational cost of about $3 million. You'll see that there's a lot of different things that come into play in the technology plan, including curriculum content and learning resources, software applications, the hardware infrastructure. The training and professional development is really key as we try to make some dramatic changes in how we instruct our students and engage our students in the learning process. And then, our operational costs such as telecom services, software maintenance resources, technical support and contracted services. Our funding, the blue shows our current projected funding. The red shows the needed funding to fulfill this plan. The, most of the cost, increased costs are associated with increasing the quantity of devices. Because we're looking at mobile devices, we need to increase the frequency in which we replace those devices, provide for continued increase in our network systems, the capacity, the support, the staff needs supports, and some additional contracted services for the speed at which we need to address the changes. This time, I'll take any questions or comments. Alan?
Yeah, Lori, thank you for that update. The, it says Canvas is going to be rolled out in the high schools this year. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, do the teachers already have that in their classroom, or are they going to, how's that work?
They've already started the Train the Trainer program. Holly's here also, so she can answer some questions if you have specifics. But, they've started the Train the Trainer program, and all high school staff will be in service as they start the school year, and there'll be follow-up training sessions. And then, there's some minimum expectations so that students and staff and parents know that they can go there to find certain pieces of information initially. Canvas is also going to be available K-12.
Right. What's nice is this, Dr. Benson and company, this is rolling forward like this. It kind of surprised me when I read it. I was very pleased to see this happening now. This is like a year ago. We made a push for this, and you've got to implement it in short order, because you had to look at multiple platforms, and you got Canvas. One thing I wanted to comment is that I just went to the training on Project Lead the Way, and there's 5,000 schools now, and they've adopted Canvas as their basis. So, all the Project Lead the Way programs use this Canvas to get all their curriculum out, because they don't use books. And so, this kind of ties in nicely. And it's a very fast-growing company, from what I understand, Canvas is that they can't get enough people fast enough. So, congratulations.
Keith?
I have a question about the security issues and how we're integrating all that to be sure that we don't get breached on this. Brief answer on that?
So, data security, we are working with the state of Iowa right now. They have a program, which is a grant program, a no-cost program to us, in which they install some equipment and monitor our data systems and network and house, and tell us where our weaknesses are so that we can remedy them.
So, that's not part of the $5.6 million, or?
No, but if we do need to make any changes in equipment or software applications, then that would be included.
Yeah, I can tell you from the Kirkwood experience that we have had conversations with Lori, and she's had conversations with her staff about this issue of breaches and security. I'm most concerned, not necessarily on the instructional side with some of our things, but we, I have more concern about some of our student management, our SIS system, and that's a, that's a package system, and as part of the system, we buy upgrades, and so it's constantly being refreshed. But, it is a concern for all of us.
And it seems the bigger the system, the more sophisticated, the more people try to break it. That's why I'm asking that question. And a second question, which kind of parallels it, is inventory control systems, you know, on hardware and software that we're, you know, watching and to maintain our equipment, where it's at, et cetera.
Currently, we do, in technology, we do inventory our equipment. We do building sweeps and, and check the equipment at least once a year, if not twice a year. But, we also have an asset management system that's in the final stages of implementation, and that will help us track any changes of movement of equipment as we go.
There, as I recall, there was a cost savings from purchasing printed textbooks. Is that factored into the $5.6 million, or is that a savings on top of the $5.6 million cost?
The curriculum materials is not included, the cost for the curriculum materials is not included in here. It was very difficult to even put a number at that until you look at specific curriculum.
But, there would be cost savings from not having to buy printed textbooks, potentially?
Potentially.
Yeah, and that's, that's a different budget.
Okay.
Gary?
As we look at increasing the use of technology, and starting with Canvas, and have more access from students and parents to the system, what's our plan on increasing, I'm assuming, our bandwidth, the capacity? I think we had a conversation at one time that our, internally, our bandwidth is, is adequate to support, but our incoming link from Grant Wood AEA may need to, to be improved or boosted.
Right. We constantly monitor those. We haven't had shortages of bandwidth since about 2010, when we put in a second link, so that if one, we can kind of load balance the links. But, we also work with our vendors so that we can increase the capacity as the need arises. So, right now, we have 150 megs, I believe, I'm looking at Matt, from one of our vendors, but we can take that up to a gig. So, we can take that almost, you know, eight times what we have now, or seven times what we have now in the next three-year period. But, we will continue to monitor that, monitor that and try to stay ahead of it.
And part of the, excuse me, part of that monitoring is, is looking at, at our load. We know that under some of the assessment guidelines that are being developed now, that the expectation is that those assessments will be done online, and so, we know that we'll have some peak volume, and when those occur, we have in the past, and I would in the future, shut off certain components in order to facilitate that assessment being done in a, in a really sharp, crisp way on the internet.
I've, I've heard comments from some staff, and I don't, don't know if it's isolated to a particular building or several, but that there have, there have been problems in either the network being slow, or more slow than I think now being able to get on, but just slow and, and being able to download and work with documents. So, I, I don't know what the monitoring, you know, what your system is for monitoring, but if maybe at some point you want to share that, that would be great.
Sean?
I was going to say, one of the things I recall is that we collaborated with the city and the counties to put in the fiber optics throughout Cedar Rapids, so, in the school district. So, we saved millions of dollars, I think, as a school district doing that sort of project. And part of this was working with the city to establish wireless hotspots and hot zones, and I'm just curious where that discussion might be going, if it's had any sort of serious airing, collaboration with local telecommunications companies, or anything on that, that one?
Well, we've, the city and the county and the schools are looking at what options we have internally to provide some hotspots. So, if our schools can be hotspots and, and the such, some parks are being made hotspots. And then, as we look at expanding that coverage farther out into the neighborhoods, then we would probably be looking at community partnerships with some of the telcos because of the support requirements behind that, offering that type of service.
Sure. I just see us, you know, we're, we're a technology-strong community, and we have areas where families aren't able to probably afford some of those wireless services. So, we, we obviously need this for the kids to be able to do the homework and things at home. So, I'd encourage us to continue those discussions.
We're also collecting that data in the registration process now, collecting.
I saw that. I actually brought my daughters from, I did it last night, and I saw you have on here, "My child has access to computer for schoolwork, and my child has access to internet for schoolwork." So, I figured that's what that was all about, so.
We really want to get a strong indication of what, what gap we do have in that area so that we can make the appropriate plan to address that gap.
That's great. Thanks. That's great, thanks.
Lori, we really want you to push that. Every time I go and visit schools and talk to students, a lot of them say that they do go home at night and they can't contact. And that really puts them at a disadvantage. So, it's, it's great that you're collecting that data, but we need someone just to really start pushing this issue. We've talked about it for years and years and years. So, whatever you can do to facilitate that, we would be very appreciative. Alan, did you have something else?
Just real quick, under the action plan for your deal, I, I meant to ask you earlier on this, redesign district and websites, and that was an item on our agenda. Can you share with the group, the community, kind of what that website redesign, what the big goal is, the overreaching goal, why we're even doing that? And we have 31 websites already, and they're working great, and we've got this really nice Cedar Rapids one that's working well. I mean, I really do like the Cedar Rapids one, the base one, but the other ones I joke about. But tell us what the big plan is on that.
We have probably 35 different websites within the district, and we want to get some consistency, so it's easy to navigate if you have a student in an elementary school, in a middle school, in a high school, and you also want to get information from the district website. We want to make it consistent, so that it's easier to navigate, give it a more robust content management system on the back end, so that it's easier to maintain and keep that, those websites up to date. And also, you know, give it a, a very professional look.
And there's that fine balance between consistency and that overall message of, some of our schools, and I'm not saying anything to upset anyone, but some of our schools didn't look like they belonged to the Cedar Rapids School District. It was almost an independent school on, on their own. So I think we're going to see some consistency in that look as part of that process as well.
That, that is one of the goals, yes.
Right, and our, go ahead.
I said, thank you.
Our faculty and staff can in fact have their own websites and things, but we are encouraging through Canvas and through our website design, that they would have the ability to communicate inside our firewall, so to speak, and, and deal with issues, rather than going out and having an independent Facebook page. Now, some people will do that, but we're providing that capability inside the district.
John?
As I recall reading through this too. Lori, that some of the search features right now, and I can attest to this, are difficult, I think, on our central website. So this should help the search functions to find documents or data that we need.
That's another one of the criteria listed in the RFP, was to have a robust search feature.
And it was put out to bids, so how, how many bids did you get back on this to, to come down to this one that was the best?
I believe we had 14 or 15.
14, so, okay. So there was a lot of competition, and obviously, we got a good price on that for the scope of the project. Okay.
I did look at some of the websites that this firm designed, and I was very pleased, and they were easy to navigate. Good, we're moving in the right direction. Any other comments? Yes, Keith?
One of the things I personally like to see on websites is some phone numbers, that you can actually get ahold of a human being. I go through a lot of websites, and I think ours a little bit this way too, that, you know, I, I need to get ahold of Jackson Elementary, and here's the phone number I can call. Because more and more people are using that as the phone book, so to speak, and if there's no numbers there, makes it very difficult. That's just a suggestion.
We, we obviously believe in that personnel, personal contact. We have a person stationed at our front door, and that's the philosophy of the district. I too am frustrated when I can't find it, because I'm a phone call kind of guy.
Right.
Some of us grew up in that generation, you know, we actually dialed.
I, I didn't grow up in that generation. Unfamiliar technology to me. Okay, thank you very much. Before you leave though, would you mind introducing our, our network administrator?
Yes, Matt Butler is our network supervisor. He is taking the lead on the website redesign project, and also many of the things that we talked about tonight, he is heavily involved with.
You have a big job, so we appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
May I counter here too? And/or email?
Yeah.
Address.
Okay. Next, I'm going to turn over to Marsha, who's, who's going to give us a great update on our social media efforts.
Well, thank you, President Meishling. It's a nice transition from the technology report, actually, since a lot of this is around the same place. We are becoming very social friends. We are a very social school district. We started small, and we've been thoughtful and very planned in how we've brought on platforms, but we're seeing positives from each one, and it's my pleasure to give you an update on each of those tonight. Justin's going to kind of run the PowerPoint from me, for me from back there. It all started with our homepage, which we were just talking about, and that is where we, this is still our active homepage, and you'll see in the lower-left corner that a lot of our social media platforms are located and linked from there. I would just quickly step aside, and at the top where it says "schools," if you click on that, they do all come up by name with phone numbers and emails for the principals. So, while we will update that, those are right there, if anybody's looking for those under that school link, right there at the top. So this is a quick access that's going to be part of the redesign with the tech plan, but this does provide access to our, for our community, to our social media platforms. And then, we started with a tweet. We decided to start tweeting, and we, we dealt with a lot of confusion about what it was called, what it was said, what it was, what it meant, what it was doing. And we started in 2010, when, when a lot of young people were using it, but not as many school districts. We were one of the, the first in the UEN to start with Twitter, and worked together, sort of as a team with other school districts to do this. And we are @CRSchools is our Twitter handle, we have a handle, and we have 864 followers of the district handle, which is not, a nice number, and we'd like to see that continue to grow, but understanding that what we use this for, if you go to the next one, Justin, is district information. Information about school delays and cancellations, reminders of early dismissal, first day of classes, links to homepage web stories and videos, and to engage with our families and their students. We aren't using it for building-specific or program-specific information, because a lot of those teachers and principals do have their own Twitter handles. Twitter is an option that's available to our staff, and many, many of them, and many more all the time, are using that to communicate. We have several schools with Twitter handles, a couple new ones came on this summer, and I will be getting you an updated link, because I know many of you are active on the social platform and like to follow those. Trace Pickering would like is, would like to get more information to teachers about different ways that they can use it, with the retweet fashion and, or feature, and the hashtag feature. So I think you'll see from our staff, a, a greater use of it for educational purposes between their students and their families and the community. And he'll be working with me and with the principals on that. But for district information pushout, this is what we use it for, and those folks that choose to follow us have the opportunity to learn a lot more about what we're doing, and will be joining in, in the hashtag and the retweet piece with the teachers, and starting to multiply our use of that. So we should see that start to increase its use even more. And then, there it is, we moved to YouTube, and this is our, our YouTube site, it's called Engage CR Schools. We launched it last December. This doesn't mean we didn't have videos before, as you all know, we've had videos for a long time. But they used to be housed on Latronics, which was a little less efficient in how it produced itself, it was, and it was somewhat costly. So at the time that we were at the end of our contract with them, we decided to move strictly to YouTube, which is a free service for us at this point. We don't know what YouTube might do in the future, but at this point, YouTube is free. So it's an easier access for our patrons. Also, the videos are better quality for us. Again, it's free, and we're able to link them easily from a variety of, of our sites, and share them, I think, a little more easily than we were in the other format. So as you know, Board of Education meetings are on YouTube now, people can watch you at any time. You're now, you've now gone viral, a little bit, as they say. We also do some. With 3,000 views? Not quite yet. You never know, one of these meetings may be the one. We use it as a conduit for our social media platforms. We launched our CR Story series last spring, which has been wonderfully successful, and we bringing that back up again in the fall for short videos that are informative to our community, and showcase our programs and learning activities. We have the opportunity to put information on YouTube. Our informational video about the PEPAL will go on there. As far as other places, the green video is on there, that Rob Kleinsmith produced about our green initiative. It's a wonderful opportunity for us to be in a site that a lot of people know about. YouTube was a good, a good move for us. And again, at this point, that's a free service, and we like that, so. And we moved into the EngageCRSchools.com site with MindMixer in January of 2013. It's only been just over six months since we launched our crowdsourcing transparency opportunity to engage with the community at any time, from any place tool. It's a wonderful chance for folks that have input they want to share with us, to be able to do that at any time, and online, at their convenience. We post the topics. The topics have come from cabinet and from board members, a couple of them have come directly from one or more of you, and the cabinet discusses those, those topics. We have 191 people that are actively participating, and visitors are about 2,500. Yeah, it's interesting, thanks to Mark Beneshek, our social media specialist, for some of this data, the average age of our participants is 42 years and six months, right down there. And the gender is largely, largely females, they must like to be online more often. We have used 13 topics to this point, which is fairly similar to other school districts who use MindMixer and an Engage site. 92 ideas have come from those. Every time there are ideas, those go to the administrator or the group that submitted the topics, so that they have the opportunity to do with it what they need to do in, in continuing the conversation. Various comments, you'll see an example there about technology, STEM, we used those as topics. What's your vision for technology in the school district? Lori used that as part of her community engagement towards the development of the technology plan. So it was a wonderful platform for that. We're continuing to use MindMixer. In the summer, it was pretty quiet, we did, and I checked with some other school districts, theirs were pretty quiet too, unless you were in Iowa City, and theirs was very active. They have a lot going on, so they weren't really the good balance for us. But we just did something unusually new and kind of exciting. The city of Cedar Rapids kind of learned about MindMixer through our use of it, and they launched their own site this summer. And as part of their promotion of it, we are now, we kind of, we cross-launched a topic on, on Friday, and we both are promoting the other site this way, as a way to hopefully engage additional people to both sites. The topic is about creativity of individuals and children. It's not a burning topic, it was something that we thought was a great way to tie into the creative corridor focus right now in our region, and a nice opportunity for us to test the waters and work together on this. Their MindMixer site was kind of put together with our involvement, they shot all their videos here, they came to, to our studio and did that. So we've been working together on this all along, and we're both anxious to see if we, how it will grow and how it will develop. And it's largely based on who's engaging, and, and what the topic is, and if we have something there that people have interest in discussing more, and, and what's kind of happening in our district. So, I encourage you to continue to submit topic ideas that we can consider either as polls, or as quick polls, or as topics, or some other way that we can do that. We will be putting the PEPAL informational video there as a topic by the end of this week, or very early next week, it'll be ready. So, that'll be the next thing that you see go up on the Engage CR site. And, we're on Facebook. We moved on to Facebook in February, and it was very exciting, because it was, we were very nervous about it. Facebook made a lot of us nervous because of several of the options with how the youth originally got involved in it, but I would tell you that as all of us have moved on to Facebook, they've moved off. Fewer and fewer, fewer and fewer teenagers are using Facebook, because all of the parents moved on. So, they found other things. So this has actually become an ideal way to communicate with parents and adults, because kids aren't paying any attention to it at all, at this point. So, it's working really nicely for us. As you'll see, we, as you see there, we have this, I want to point this out, we have this lovely banner, cover picture, that we're about to change. We have a new cover picture that we'll roll out with the start of the school year, that'll somewhat play up our rich history and innovation theme that we're also using with a publication that will come out later this month. So, you'll see something new there. We have 623 people who are liking our fan page, which does not mean that only 623 people are visiting our page, because we are reaching all kinds of people. We are reaching men and women, most of them like to be online after 9:00 PM. Mark finds me the oddest little factoids here. Online after 9:00 PM. And as you can see in this chart, our usage and our likes have continually gone up, as we've continued to have the site. And I think that they'll grow even more as we get into the school year, and it, it has even more promotion and recognition. If you go to this next slide, Justin, you'll get, you'll all see an example of several of the pieces that we've put on there, and how many views they get. That's actually the key number for us. You will see that when we announced that Kennedy High School was ranked Iowa's best school, 4,513 people hit that, and within a couple of days to see and saw that. So, our numbers on Facebook are huge, and depending upon what we post there, and what people are interested in, and what they like to look at. So, our perfect ACT score got, got wonderful ones, it was a great way to showcase volunteers and our employees that have had milestone years. Those were things we really had no place to do that before, but we have, with Mark's assistance and Justin as well, creatively been able to also post those on the recognition plaza, just to set that as an aside. So we're able to duplicate the use of that in, in various platforms. And coming soon, we think, we're going to pilot something this fall, and who uses Pinterest? Let's see a show of hands. Yes, there go all the, oh my gosh, Dr. Benson's hand went up on that. I was about to say, all the women just told me they use Pinterest. And Dr. Benson, good, I'm glad to know that. We're, Des Moines has Pinterest, and, John too. As an aside, the gentleman who started, invented, or launched Pinterest is a graduate of the Des Moines School District, he's an Iowan. And so, Des Moines has been very active in this, but they are one of the smallest school districts using it. We are smaller than them. We want to pilot it and see what we can do, where it'll go, if we're able to. We will just have a district page, not built, or a district Pinterest page, and what we post on there will be photos of activities and different things, to see if John and Dr. Benson and Mary, if you guys all like it, and pin it onto your boards, then it will spread even further. We'll see how this plays. We're going to pilot it this fall. We may be too small for this to actually do much for us, but it, but it could be an opportunity to reach some folks that don't use Facebook, with some of our great visuals. And we have some wonderful visuals of the things that we're doing. So, we're excited about that. And Lori explained the use of, I wanted to back up just briefly with Facebook, with the use of Canvas for the opportunity for our teachers to be able to use that, and then have their parent groups choose to receive that information through Facebook. Because we, we do get questions from teachers about, that they want their own page, they want to do their own. And this will really give us a nice opportunity with, within the firewalls of the district, for people who want to access that information as parents through Facebook, to still have our teachers be able to share it with an educational platform. And with that, I would be happy to take any questions you have.
Great report, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Questions or comments? Yes, Alan?
Always good for one. This is all electronic, right? We talked about, good job, but what about the postcard idea? I've kind of lost track, I know that's not on this agenda, but the idea of.
The postcards? Well, nobody here but you and I and Mary know about it, but it's, it is in the works, yeah. We have, we can talk about it. We have a wonderful print campaign that's going to run this year that involves postcards. And we'll be doing that, yes.
Okay.
I would, I would share, since you asked, Director Whit, that I have been gathering input from alumni to include on that one side of those cards. So, right now, we're just getting the start of the school year things and the PEPAL things done, and as soon as we get that rolled off, we'll be back to that.
Great, thank you.
Speaking of notable alumnus, our new director.
Of the Department of Ed, yes. The new director of the Department of Ed is a 1987 graduate of Jefferson High School. So, and we put that on the Facebook page, so, very exciting.
Gary?
On YouTube, our, our presence there, I'm used to, when I go to YouTube, it's because of a link, someone, you know, looking at a particular video. Is there a, a, a way that just all our videos are clumped, clumped together on YouTube?
If you search, I'm looking at Mark, if you search the, the CR Schools name that I showed you, Justin, can you perhaps bring the? Engage, and then you can subscribe to the Engage CR Schools YouTube site, and then it'll tell you.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions?
So I was wondering how many of these websites you can actually get to from a, through the district network, or if.
Facebook is not something that we have open to staff and students. We did make that, make staff aware of that. We don't use Facebook as a way to communicate during the workday with staff. Staff who have personal Facebook pages certainly can like, and, and many do, because I can see who likes and follows, and since I'm an administrator of the site, I can tell. They're able to do that on their own time, but not through the district. Everything else is available.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you.
It's exciting, our board is very happy that we are this socially engaged in the media, so, thank you.
We like being social.
Yes, we do like being social. Okay, next I'll turn this over to Dave and Laurel to talk about policy manual review and revisions.
Policy review committee is bringing forward four documents for your consideration this evening. First is a procedure on the leadership, leadership team flow chart, which just updates the administrative team. Regulation 500.1 is the workplace expectations, and the next two documents actually deal with the updates to our tobacco policies, which now includes nicotine and look-alikes. with the updates to our tobacco policies, which now includes nicotine and look-alikes. If you have any questions, we're happy to help answer.
Questions or comments from board? John?
The workplace expectations, is this new, or has that always been there?
This is a proposed regulation, so it is new.
It is new, and, but was this in consultation, I'm assuming, with the different labor groups in the district?
I'll let Jill address that.
Mainly with the teacher and parent association.
The teachers and the parents' association?
Para.
Para, okay.
Did they see this before you presented it here?
Yes.
And they were, you took their comments and...
We worked on revisions with them.
Okay.
Okay.
Policy Review Committee has looked at this document for probably three or four months. It's taken us a while to get to where it is today, so there was a lot of thought, communication that went into it before bringing forward.
You know, I thought Dave made a good point earlier before the meeting started, that we don't have a handbook, per se, a personnel handbook, so...
The policy manual is your handbook.
Right.
Gary?
I think it's also important to look at Document 500, and I don't, I looked at it earlier today, that, that opens this section, and it talks about general philosophy and so on, and I think that, I can't recite it off the top of my head, but it's a good, it's a good article to look at before looking at 501, 500.1.
Right. And if you remember, we do bring documents forward, our goal is to bring them forward every five years. I'm not sure where 500 falls in this series right now, but we are meeting tomorrow, as a matter of fact, the committee's meeting tomorrow, to review, to see which policies are up, and we'll certainly look to see where 500 is.
Other comments? Alan?
Just one question on this flowchart. It's very helpful, by the way. The Community Relations, thanks, Marcia's spot, is that always been on its own, or was it underneath the Executive Director of Businesses last time I saw this? Did that change?
No, that has not changed.
It's always been, Dr. Benson, okay. All right, thank you.
Other comments, questions?
All right, we'll bring the policy forward back for your approval at our next board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on this. Next, we're going to appoint our school district treasurer. Maybe, maybe not. And Ann, would you like to?
So, be it resolved. So, I move that Steve Graham be hereby appointed as treasurer of the Board of Directors for a term of one year, beginning August 12, 2013, and shall qualify for said appointment by taking the oath of office in the manner required by Section 277.28, and thereafter shall hold office until a successor is appointed and qualified.
This is a roll call action?
Director Rosenthal.
Aye.
Director Witt.
Aye.
Aye.
Director Anhalt.
Aye.
Director Laberty.
Aye.
President Meisterling.
Aye. Steve, if you want to go ahead and step up, I'll read you the oath of office.
Are we up here with the lights? Do you want to...
I need a picture for social media.
That concludes our business this evening, unless anyone else has anything they want to bring up. Seeing none, please take your calendars home and complete your meeting evaluation, and thank you all. Have a great rest of your evening.